Okay, well, I have seven thirty. Doctor's clock, but all that I think is slow, so we're gonna go with my time. It is seven thirty this evening on the fifteenth of January to call the meeting of the Greensburg Plan Commission to order. I would ask if you all would stand and raise your hand. Pledge allegiance for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to amend the agenda here just a little bit, but before I do, other than having a roll call, I will note that all the members of the Plan Commission are present: Bruce, Kevin Blake, Roy Tom, John, and myself. And I will ask for an approval of minutes. They were distributed to you via email. And are there corrections or additions to be made to minutes from December eighteenth meeting? Do I hear by the silence approval, a motion for approval?
So may.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Perfect. Minutes are approved as admitted. I've conducted this meeting to get it started. We do have to set an elector president, but before we do that, I would like to also skip over to appointing a secretary, so we have a secretary who's working but actually can't be officially appointed. I know I announced to you the other month that we did have a willing volunteer in John Neiman, and what we would need tonight, unless there are other nominations to be made, is appointment or election as such, or if there's other nominations to nominate those people, then we can select one.
I make a motion to appoint John Neiman as Secretary.
Second.
Okay, it's moving seconded. Is there further discussion? Are there further nominations? Okay, I will call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, congratulations, John.
Thank you, I think.
And we'll tell them that. I'm gonna turn the meeting over for election of president to our attorney, Chris Steven, in order to take care of this part of my business.
Thank you, Councilman Tebby. Mr. Secretary, if possible, would you please formally call the roll?
Cole, Blake O'Meara?
Here.
John Hedinger?
Here.
Roy Midendorf?
Here.
Bruce Brockover?
Here.
Glenn Tebby?
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood?
Here.
Tom Hunter?
Here.
Good, everybody?
Thank you. Next item of my business is appointment of our election of the president coming here. Mr. Blake?
Could I make a nomination?
Sure.
I would like to want Tebby to the room to continue holding the office of President.
Nomination, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Councilman Tebby, do you accept the nomination?
I will.
Okay. Any further nominations from the board? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call motion vote on the nomination of Glenn Tebby. Mr. Secretary, if you could call the roll or call the vote, please.
Do this by?
Just name it.
Blake O'Meara?
Yes.
John Hedinger?
Yes.
Roy Midendorf?
Yes.
Bruce Brockover?
Yes.
Glenn Tebby?
Thank you.
Kevin Fleetwood?
Yes.
Tom Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Pass? Uh, Mr. Tebby?
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that. We have in the past, it's not on the agenda, but we have in the past had a vice chair appointed or elected correct in order to confirm that's it. I think, didn't, we have had a vice chair, right? So let's begin with nominations for vice chair for the commission. Did someone nominate someone? Or self-nominate, if that's what you want. If that's what you want. There's been a nomination for Blake. Is there a second to this?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a nomination. Blake, are you willing to accept that?
Yes.
Are there other nominations? Hearing none? If that is a none, give the board another minute if necessary. Right? Then I would ask for a roll call vote also for Blake as vice chair. Blake O'Meara?
Vice President.
Stand.
John Hedinger?
Yes.
Roy Midendorf?
Yes.
Bruce Brockover?
Yes.
Glenn Tebby?
Yes.
Kevin Fleetwood?
Yes.
Tom Hunter?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen. The only items we have on the agenda tonight are continuation of items we've been doing the last couple of months. The first one is the sign ordinance, and I thank you all. I want to thank Chris again for his good work in noting the changes. As I saw them, I thought that the changes that we asked for were noted, but there were a number of them, and I'm hoping that you all reviewed that to be sure. What we want to do tonight is make sure we've got the changes we asked for last time. I'd like for us to be sure that we are comfortable with what we've got here. I'm also hoping and suggesting that this be, we finalize it tonight from our perspective. I believe it's now, my opinion is, it's time for us to move it on to the council and move it on to more public review, if you will, get it out there, get people looking at it with more eyes. We've looked at it many times. It's beginning to all bleed together a little bit. So that's my agenda for tonight for this topic. So with that, are there areas that you see that we need yet to address, clarification or correction? And we can either just sing out, or I'm gonna go down the line and have people pick up.
Councilman Tebby, if I could make one. Sean Green was also very instrumental in his assistance with this. He did send me a couple of illustrations that we can utilize in the determination of sign area, the definition of sign area. There's three JPGs, which I believe they're, we have pictures of.
They're here. He brought them here that we could see them. He couldn't get them.
I just have not had an opportunity to resize them, to be able to fit them into the document yet, but those are the illustrations that we need.
Pass them this way, we'll have them that way.
Play it to, to, I wanted to make sure that was good.
Yeah, thank you. I had them right in front of me and I.
Do we have the definition of a multi-tenant sign yet?
No, it's not, we need to. Yeah, that one. Sean, we're still gonna look to you for that definition of a multi-tenant.
Under the individual letter or individual amount of letters, I had on the meeting last time that we've been ahead, whole sign.
Yeah, I did too.
She's done it with that.
At page five of the team.
Okay. Bruce is done. After channel letters or after ground sign?
Well, we may have to, yeah. We may have to put that in, in athletic order in another spot, but we were, I had the same page. And I thought we had it just from the other definition that we already had in the previous. We're just gonna add it to, it's already defined later in the, a reference later in the document, I believe.
Yes.
And I just wanted to bring it up as a defined term also. Thanks, John.
Chris, while you're on page five?
Yes.
Designation and directional book are labeled I.
I believe directional is labeled J.
Oh, J. It looks like an I on my printout. Okay, could be just, well, my printout looks like an I.
Yeah, it does look that way, but I think it's supposed to be a J. You're just getting it, you're just printing it out differently, that's all, I think.
Page numbers are the only thing I think is.
The sections I think are the same.
Well, we're, the next page two, and it's, it may be something in formatting, but I'm not sure exactly. On page six, under roof, double H, we then got seasonal or holiday and sticker and it's I, I, and JJ. Oh, okay. That's right. I was thinking it's.
Right.
I looked at it again like Tebby did, it's two I's, so.
I know mine is small. Bruce is different. It was as far as the font. We're just talking about why is it different?
I think.
I think his font's a little different.
The content should be exact, I don't know, 'cause if you, did you?
He doesn't seem to have the I's.
You got a PDF, didn't you? No, it was a Word, but, yeah, so you're just printing it out, you're just not converting it to the viewer of Word, no, I can't.
Because he doesn't have the I's and the.
No big deal, I'm pretty sure.
Thanks.
See, that is tricky. You got bullets for some reason, it's the, it shouldn't be L's. I guess I got bullets too in that section. You got the letters.
Just for the record, John just pointed out to me that on page six, I do have double I's, sign was KK and then I, I again, it should be LL.
Yeah, I did too. Really more formatting problem than content.
Actually, it looks like on, it looks like on seven as well. I repeated myself twice. LL's, KK's. I'll fix the formatting.
But that's really, yeah, again, it's format and not content of the actual word.
This is where he, this is the section where he was adding his little notes, so he had to convert it back to get to the full Word document.
Okay, gentlemen, other questions or things that you've noted? Made the change, the political signs, the window signs, made those changes. Formatting thing on page eleven, in mine at least, there's an extra bullet point that's just where we deleted, I think we were deleting, I'll look back at my original here, deleted there and that, but.
Prohibitive signs.
We deleted fences there, and it was the same, that was there, or the bullet point. I think we've got the other changes.
Against formatting.
On page sixteen, under central business area, we have multi-tenant, and I thought we were talking about adding, and maybe I just, we've talked about this a number of different times, but I can be easily confused here, about the blade sign in that area. You all recall that? About adding that as one of the, as an option, you got one blade would be permitted.
Yeah, I got over one blade. We were gonna add.
One under a canopy sign or one blade, I think, right, Sean?
Right, that's what we were gonna put, right? That's what I might have.
Were you gonna ask? Page, under central business, page sixteen of what my document is. The multi-tenant, multi-level, we had one wall projecting, one under canopy or blade, I thought, or was it gonna be and blade?
And blade.
I thought it was two, because it was canopy and a blade are two different things.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, okay. We need to add there, instead of one sandwich board, just add another bullet point, one blade sign.
Okay.
I believe we're using the word blade and projecting throughout it being the same definition.
Okay, so.
So I wanna make sure my addition is right, under, am I adding another bullet point that says one or one blade, or am I adding a two under the, under one or under canopy sign?
Yeah, I think you're in it. It says one wall, projecting, awning, and so forth, it should be projecting or blade, right?
Yeah, yeah. Projecting and blade.
Well, you're saying projecting and blade were the same, right? I thought that's just what you said.
I did, but I was wrong. Projecting.
Well, then it would be.
Let me look at the definitions.
If it's an or, then it would be one wall, projecting, blade, awning, canopy, window, or marquee sign per street footage.
I've said comma, blade, comma.
Yeah.
Definition of blade is a smaller version of a projecting sign, which is oriented to read from the sidewalk.
So, in that case, then, it would be projecting or blade, comma, awning, comma, because projecting is a smaller, blade is a smaller version of projecting sign.
So they could have both?
No, it'd be or.
Or we'd get one.
You're gonna have, you can have one projecting, awning, canopy, window, or marquee, only one of those on a multi-tenant building. You can also have a one under canopy sign and a sandwich board sign.
Okay.
That's, as I read this.
Yeah. I think to factuate what we just discussed, I would suggest making it one floor, or one wall, comma, projecting slash blade, comma, since they're rather consistent.
Okay. The one definition subsinsing.
Yes.
Okay.
Got it, okay.
How good, you all good?
Yeah.
Consensus? All right? Okay. The other thing that, Gary, this is a note to myself, but asking you to follow up on it too. When we get to the point of discussing this with council and when we get to the point of getting feedback from the public, it's gonna be important to know the boundaries for the central business district. Street boundaries, so people got a real definition, understanding of where that is, because this really is a hodgepodge of the area downtown, and it says accepted historic district, which people got a real visual of what the downtown is, but this goes out as far as, maybe as far as Ireland Street on the, on the west side, up on a block or two, few blocks south, and it goes east, maybe as far as Lincoln, I think. But I'd have to go back and look at, actual, we need to look it up. At least that's what it was back in the day when we created this thing, many years ago, many, many years.
The Bay one is the central business district.
Right.
Zoney classification, so it's on the zoning map.
That's, I know, but I, we just gotta get, I wanna make sure we get the specific boundaries out on. On page seventeen, I've got, Sean, I think you've got a, an older version of that definition of signs of historic district?
Through the.
In what I see there, anyway. Because, I can't find it right now. Under, under the last graph we had, it was more explicit than this. It was, it dealt with, what caught my attention is, we had these acronyms spelled out, and then repeated as acronyms later on. If you have the previous graph, it's, it's much more clear than less, less regular. And as I understood it, that was what we were agreeing to.
Yeah, 'cause we start out with that section defining historic preservation permission, then in brackets, HPC.
Right.
Like that, so it's referred to later as HPC, but you've already defined it earlier in your paragraph.
And makes, what, the other thing that caught my mind, my eye, was when I read this, the last sentence in what's this draft you sent says, "Subject to the following criteria, which shall include but not be limited to the following," which is what we had a long time ago, and we scrapped, because it was adopting the guidelines into the statute. So I'd be glad to give you this as the reference if you need to go back and see, but it.
Yeah, I'll just look through my past versions and find it, and I'm sure it was a, would have classified as a catastrophic campaign starter.
I don't care how we classify it, but it's actually what it was. I know, okay. Going through the pages, anything else?
Glenn, going back to fifteen, page fifteen. I had on my original one floor that had the setback, was gonna put like one foot setback, is that in there, or I didn't see it, but I'm not missing.
Okay, for, on.
Designated signs.
You know, we had a discussion about.
Wonder what section, John?
Well, it was designated sign, and then again, under enclosed shopping sign, and then I got under reference to appendix one, along the two, so I'm not sure.
I believe he's referencing section three point eight B and three point eight C.
Okay. Enclosed.
You were talking about unenclosed shopping centers, and originally, if you go back some, we had ten feet in, is that what you're talking about, John?
Sure.
Designation sign, originally, we had ten feet off the property line, and we were changing that to one foot.
So where it says, shall we let it get ten feet off the property line, that should now be one foot off the property line?
I believe that's what we came up with, with the, all lots must meet the definition of the clearance, vision clearance triangles thing. That needs to be added on to that, so that.
It is there, it's written there, all lots must.
Right, so we changed to one foot.
Right, that's what I have, Sean, we went with one foot, as long as it meets the vision triangle.
Page sixteen as well?
Yes.
I think that's where we, we're gonna go with, you know, under.
Sean suggested.
Right.
Yeah, we.
Thank you for catching that, John.
Yeah, we agreed to go with one foot, meaning the vision triangle. Very well.
All right. Other, other things? Kevin or Tim, did I try to say something that you got here? Chris? I've got one other little question before we get to the chart. I know we've got temporary signs, you can be allowed, so forth, in the business and industrial zoning districts and so forth. I've got a question about, I think we have, we discussed it at one point in time, at least in our committee, about nonprofits also needing to apply for temporary signs. There's nothing in here about that at this point in time, nothing specifically saying that that's the case, that they would need to do that. Temporary signs are allowed, one sign per parcel and so forth. And it may be, and maybe it's just, it's clearly implied, you know, you're gonna put up a sign, you have to get a permit, so maybe it's clearly implied. But that was a question, I think, that I wanted to make clear to people, as people might read this and not really think it applies to them in that circumstance. And the other, may I ask?
Sure. Now, you're referring to like churches and such as a nonprofit.
Or like TCP or.
I thought they had a thirty day allow.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they gotta apply, and then they have, there's a time period and everything for them to be able to say when they're gonna place it, and where they're gonna place it and all that, and we do say that if all premise signs are gonna be used, they have to get, clearly get the permission of the owner of the property and all that. But it's one of those things that I think will, won't be understood by just reading through it, I don't think. I think most people think the sign and the sign ordinance in terms of businesses and that kind of thing, as opposed to the high school advertising the spring club, or, you know what I'm saying? Wherever they might put up a sign.
So would this apply like network camping, corner dinner, across the circle K as well?
Well, yeah, it should. It should. You know, or the United Fund putting up a, a sign that says.
We've reached our goal.
Yeah. I mean, that's what we're implying here. Now, if we don't wanna do that, we can, as we get moving on, in terms of the city council argument, we can also put an exemption, write an exemption, and the exemptions won't get that far. But am I correct in saying that's what we were implying, when we were saying we wanted all signs to go?
I don't remember that conversation. I don't think it was possible on that conversation. I think you're creating, you could be creating a lot of work for people that don't know that you're supposed to be doing that. We put a lot of signs up on our property at our schools, and we're probably not gonna run down and get a permit to put everyone's signs up, to be honest. And I think a lot of the other nonprofits aren't gonna do that either. But I, I think you're creating a layer there that.
Is there gonna be a cost, a permit?
Uh, there is, isn't there?
Yes, twenty dollars.
You know, I, I don't, I feel like if we do do that, then we're defeating the purpose of them to trying to accomplish that goal, like you say, the United Fund or something like that, where it's a charitable organization, and people won't contribute as much to take things in, you know, because they get discouraged, they go, you know, we're doing this for our community, why should this orientation have to be penalized, you know, for advertising out there, trying to raise money to support these groups?
Well, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
But, you know, you could also make the argument that the businessmen already, I mean, we're, so we're saying that there's a point where clutter and distraction or anything else becomes a problem, and that's the reason we have the sign ordinance in part. And that can be, that can be contributed to also by just a plethora of other things. So that's fine. And then the same question goes with all the yard signs and garage sale signs, we're not gonna go around policing all those, I don't want, I don't want to get into that point of trying to.
I think that's where you have the nitpicky stuff, is like, so I've gotta put a sign up to advertise, own, go pay for a sign to put up on my own property to advertise, own coming, but yet you can put a political sign up or something like that, and that's probably, I think you're gonna get into a lot of nitpicking and arguing if you do this.
Well, I, I think it might be wise for us not to.
Well, you can make them an exempt sign that doesn't need permits, like your political signs are exempt signs. If it's a not-for-profit, you can make it an exempt sign, it doesn't need to come in.
That would be the way we would wanna, we would wanna address it, but under exempt signs, that not-for-profit signs would fall under exempt. That way, they don't have to come in. If there's any question, they know that they're okay.
Well, okay, and then, but then they also comply with the other sign rules.
Yes. Yes.
Those locations and things like that.
But they would be exempt, so they wouldn't, you know, buy a permit.
How do you want to define not-for-profit?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know.
Anything that, I mean.
You can go and say. You can go and use that kind of five oh one C three definition or C four or just an exempt under IRS kind of five oh one.
C fours, you get, you got your chambers, C threes, you got your churches and so forth. Cathedral is probably a C five or C miles.
C eights.
The nice coves is a C five, the schools are exempt because they're municipal or government empathy, so to speak. It's, you know, I guess what I'm, I would like to punt this to the council and let them wrestle with it.
Define it, let them define it, but.
But, because I really, I really think we need to, we need to move off of this if we can.
Right, okay, would you be comfortable with, we put it as an, under their, an exempt sign but not defining it and let council define it? Would that be something we could agree on to let the council come up with the definition of not-for-profit? The mayor don't like me right now, I can see I'm getting very low, but.
I think we should suggest that council, I'm sure it means, I think this board should suggest or give their opinion to the council.
Yeah, that's what we're here to do, I understand that.
But it should be mentioned somewhere so there's an understanding of what.
I think if you don't, you're just, we're going to put something in place that's unenforced or non-enforced or.
For sure, the garage sale and the yard sales, I like them, they are big, they're combinations and they're usually put up in all places we say they're prohibited and everything else.
And they're already put up or they're prohibited, I mean, they're not permitted to be on the black poles, but they are.
Right, but they are. And so, or street signs or whatever else where they.
Sean has a question.
Yes, Sean?
What if you put exempt from buying a permit?
But they would have to get a permit?
Exempt from getting one or buying one or both.
Oh.
Or one or the other.
Well, I think, I think they're, I think we're all agreed with that, more or less, but the question is, how do you define a not-for-profit? Who's a not-for-profit?
I don't know.
You know, who's a not-for-profit? Is it, is it only, or is it only the churches and only the paternal organizations or is it include them and does it also include, you know, the chambers, a not-for-profit organized, et cetera? I mean, I don't, you know, I'd weigh as a not-for-profit, foundation is a not-for-profit, that's five oh one C threes, those two are C threes, churches are C threes, there are C fours, C fives and those others.
Yeah, if I might make a suggestion, for clarity's sake, you may consider rather than putting it in exempt signs where you're kind of in particular locations, adding a sub-paragraph H to this that simply says entities or not-for-profit entities are exempted from requirements of, of obtaining a permit but must otherwise comply with the sign, you know, specifications of section three point one six. And then you could add a sentence after that, say, something to the effect of the planning commission reserves the right to examine a not-for-profit status or, I mean, something to that effect, whereas if someone wants to raise that, that hey, this entity or this organization is putting a sign out there, they're not really a not-for-profit, they can bring that to the planning commission and, or the board of zoning appeals to.
Yeah, I like that, because I think part of what we wanted to do was to try and find some ways to manage these signs a little bit, and that's what this section tries to do.
I like that recommendation.
Yeah.
I could add that language in H and kind of take a, take a first crack in drafting some language as far as that appeal process review.
Well, I'm not even sure we need to worry about that. I think if we have a bad actor there, we'll have to address it another way. I, I really think that we can rely on not-for-profits or exempt from obtaining a permit, but otherwise suspected to comply with the expectation of the section. Meaning they, you know, it is highly, but they can't put something up for indefinite free time. And if people are not complying with it, then you can ask them to. Okay, looking at the chart, I've got just one, one question here. The number of, of signs under freestanding, multi-use lots and panels, number of sign panels, four, five, five, six, I know, Sean, we talked about those, we wanted to limit those numbers, is those the correct numbers?
Mm-hmm. I only received one pamphlet, so it's different for what district you're in.
Yeah, well, this, this is B one, B two, B three, and then a second one's I, and they're pretty much the same. I one, I two.
I think it'd be very helpful on less clutter on the sign.
And so we, but four and five are, are what you, is considered less clutter?
Correct.
Those are, okay. And the wall signs, the same way I had, we had one and then under B two for thirty to thirty-five, we had four all the way through and then back down to two for thirty, higher speeds. B three, B three was two all the way through on the, on the speed. So I, I just wondered why there were a larger number of signs for B two as opposed to B And then wall signs under the I districts, we've got five under I one and two under I two. And I, I would see the reversal of anything or be consistent.
From what I remember, I think we're thinking of like a dealership, or what would a car dealership would be under?
A B and B three.
B three, having multiple brands that they represent.
Okay.
Allowing them to look more.
Then there's fewer, there's fewer signs under B three than there are under B two, is my point.
Yes.
Under wall.
Valid point.
I guess I would like.
Shouldn't it just be consistent?
Well, I can see a reason why it might be, yeah, I think it should be consistent, but I'm not sure four of wall signs are the right number either on a B, a B two at thirty to thirty-five miles an hour. And, so, and that's for two lanes. Greater than two lanes, thirty to thirty-five miles an hour, they've got four again. So those are, that's where I'm seeing some question mark. Everything else I think, I thought cracked pretty well, but that just didn't crack.
Just so the board knows, I didn't change any of Sean's numbers, all I did was reformat it, brought cell into a word table.
Yeah, and, and so Sean, I just think we need to relook at that.
I think you're on it, yeah.
I think that can be, if it's okay with you all, that that can be managed by Chris and Sean and as often as we get that prepared for sort of public review and comment. Is that okay with you, Bruce, Kevin, John, Tom? Blake, okay.
Yeah, just work out, so it's somewhat consistent.
All right. Oh, is there anything else, gentlemen?
Yeah, that's because, John was asking me, there's some of them like P three where they're missing information, that's because they, those were not categories under the part of the, I had to add a couple of columns to make it fit, right? When we're managing those consistencies, we'll also make sure to add consistently which.
I was just curious, I thought maybe I put it in there off.
No, no, I just didn't have a filler to put in there.
Okay, before we move some disposition for this, Sean, anything you had?
Page sixteen with central business area, at the bottom of it, it talks about a tenant above the ground floor. And specifies they can have a blade sign shall be four square feet. Should that be six to be consistent with the blade sign that would typically be allowed for anybody else?
I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to make that adjustment. So that should take sixteen instead of four square feet, it should be six.
That makes it consistent.
Right.
And then projecting sign shall not exceed fifteen square feet, which in my opinion is, is very low. Do, do we have a maximum allowed for?
Yeah, we do.
For another blade sign?
Gary, because I think you laid this part out originally, is, are you worried about if somebody up on the second level just being too much signage if there's already signage on the first level, is that?
Yeah, you don't, you really don't want double the amount of signage just because you've got another floor.
Should we tell them they have to co-opt the signage with the other tenant? So you don't put clutter all over the way?
I mean, you could limit the, the total for that facade to, you know, it could be split between two signs, so if the ground floor, if the building owner on the ground floor wants to take, you know, eighty percent and the other person is twenty, but, you know, you just limit the, the amount if there are two businesses, one on the first floor and one on the second.
I think it may be better to do that, but, I mean, because a lot of the two-story buildings I can think of in our community are pretty small storefronts, instead of having two signs on a thirty-foot building flagging off, ask, request them to split it.
So we would have to adjust the language here for tenant above the ground would be, instead of saying what we've got here, we would have one statement saying that the total signage area.
Square footage must be.
That allowable would be split between the two.
Between the two. I think they should be deserving of having their own under, little blade sign, you know, the six square foot something, because a lot of those would have two different entrances and it'd help track people better too.
Okay, so everybody understand what we're doing? Sean is suggesting, for consideration, is we are deleting, it says tenant above the ground floor, the language that's there, those two bullet points describing different sizes of signs and types, we're just saying that the tenant above the ground floor has to share the same square footage for signage that's allowed for that building with the tenant on the ground floor.
Yeah, I think it'd do well in smaller storefronts. If you had a huge building, you know, a hundred foot of length or something, they may need to, they'd have to do a variance, it's only downfall. But what I'm, unless I'm thinking of different, most of the buildings around.
Well, this is in the center, this is in the central area here.
Most of them are pretty, you know.
Narrow.
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody understand what he's suggesting?
Well, you're, are you saying that they still should have the verbiage in there that have the blade sign, six square foot for the above? We delete something, we're in there for that, correct?
Yeah, I'd leave the first bullet point, they allowed one blade sign, that would be to identify their six square foot, their little, their little place. Yes.
But the second bullet point then.
Would be deleted.
Deleted and say that this total signage should be shared between the ground and the upper floor.
Correct.
You got that, Chris?
So I'm deleting the second bullet point and adding a bullet point that says the total signage area shall be split.
Or shared, however you want.
Shared between the ground and above ground tenants.
Say, hey, you only got twenty percent left, mate.
And I need to add one blade sign not to exceed six feet.
I think that's in the.
Six square feet.
I think it's in that first one, you just have to add the six square feet of.
Right, that's right, yeah.
Okay, everybody understand that? Bruce, Kevin, Blake?
Well, the first is a little bit further down, we have blade sign should be four square feet.
And we need to talk about changing that to six, and so it's going to be, you know, the first is going to be a blade sign, in the sign, the blade sign is no bigger than six square feet. Can we take that by consensus? Is that agreeable? Okay, thank you. All right, well, then, Sean, you've got two more minutes.
Thank you.
And that's it. We're going to have to go with this again. I know we can massage it, massage it forever, but it's never going to be perfect.
Yeah, I think it's very good.
All right, just a couple of things. Gary had given us some stuff that considers requirements for a sign to have a well-defined purpose, and I think we've got that, if you look at our beginning, what we're, defined administrative procedures, well, that's really in, I don't know if we've defined administrative procedures here, we've got some in here. Clear definitions, we've got a whole, loads of definitions, I think they're fairly clear. Content neutral, legal on that. Legally addressing non-conforming signs, I'm not sure what that means.
Is, is there any sort of penalty or fine or do we have the right to remove them?
What? We do say we have the right to remove it, what if there's, if there's problems? And we do say that we, we have the authority to ask that signs be corrected. And these are a couple of things I think that maybe the council will have to consider as it moves on further. We do regulate signs by zoning district, I think that's pretty well clear. And actually, those are the primary things that I think we need to consider for this. So it's been a long, hard row, but we've gotten here. Are you comfortable moving this on with, provided we're going to make, we're proving it with the changes we consented to deny? Are you comfortable doing that? If there are any hesitation, let's speak up now. Okay, then I would entertain a motion for passage of this draft sign ordinance.
So moved.
And there's a second, Roy seconded, Blake and Roy?
We did.
In tandem?
I don't care.
Are there any other questions? I would ask for a poll. John, would you call a roll, please?
Tom Hunter.
Yes.
Kevin Flicklin.
Yes.
Len Debbie.
Yes.
Bruce Bachover.
Yes.
Roy Mittendorf.
Yes.
Don Hedinger.
Yes.
Blake O'Meara.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next steps will be to get into a form that clarifies what's impaired. My recommendation is that we will like to get it out to the public and like to get maybe an opportunity for people to comment on it after that, for the strip of council, had a council meeting for comment.
If you wanted to go to the first reading and then comment period after first reading?
That would be proper, but I'm also thinking that this next meeting, we wouldn't have the first reading yet. I think I'd like to just bring it up.
Okay.
Get it to people and get it out. Sometimes reading it in, in an ordinance form is. Sometimes reading it in, in an ordinance form is, but this will be ordinance, it's in ordinance form more or less. Let me think about that.
Okay.
We'll talk about that. Next item on our agenda is the unsafe building report. And Gary provided that to us in email. Gentlemen, do you have questions or other things to report?
I have one other house to put on your list. I do not know the exact address, but I'll give you a very good look, it's on South Michigan Avenue. It is the second house south of Five Points. It's a big red house, sits up on a hill, a little hit, a little rise, it's right across the street from Poplar Street. You're sitting on Poplar Street, you're looking dead at it. And the, there's no one living there. And the upstairs window is missing and the mini blind is out on the, what would be the roof of the porch. So the house has access.
You'll find that name of that house was, was owned by Earl Miners.
He's still on it?
As far as I know, by all bankruptcy, only a bit of their bank has.
Just needs to be addressed, that window needs to be addressed.
Okay. I guess I've got a question.